A microphone's turnaround.
...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome once again to another meeting of the City Council. I would like everyone to stand up for a moment of silent meditation. I would like to ask Councilor Armonte to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilor Vazquez.
Present.
Councilor Plant.
Here.
Councilor Toomey.
Here.
Councilor Reyes.
Present.
Councilor Monte.
Here.
Councilor Kino.
Councilor Bernal.
Present.
Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez and Council President Maldonado.
Present. Councilors, we don't have the minutes of 4:21:15 ready yet, so we are going to leave that for the next meeting of June, our first Tuesday of June. What I would like to do is go into public participation. I would like to remind those persons who I have in the list to please identify yourself. Make sure you speak to the chair and not to any direct comments to any other members of the City Council, and make sure you adhere to the requirements of the time. You are going to hear the first bell, and that will tell you that your time is getting close to the end, and when you hear the second bell, please stop and conclude your participation. The first person line is Mr. Malley.
O'Malley, 53, Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaigned promise of safe Lawrence only possible you as our elected official and Mayor Rivera support of our police department and the senior officers' union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of our honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers, and support their union. Our city has been so great because of hard-working DPW worker, FU workers, and the best leadership. Our DPW workers are the best in our nation. We, as the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our DPW and their negotiation and collective bargaining. Fire after fire, our brave firefighters sacrificed their safety so our citizen be safe. We, the citizen, demand of you and Mayor Rivera support of our firefighters and the union. Our public school with the leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh is moving forward. Turnaround plan is working. Now Lawrence Public School has the best MCAS performer, highest number of the graduate. The citizen support our teachers and their union. Our citizen, in the remaining months to your election of 2015, demand of you support our police officers and the senior officers' union, support our DPW workers and the union and our firefighters. Thank you.
The next person line is Marcelino Pecar.
Hi. Reason my visa here tonight is I've been requesting signs outside of my street about a speeding limit. Cars been racing all the time in there. It's been like five years in a row that I've been coming here to the city hall, and nobody's been doing anything, and police department never answer my phone calls. Well, they answer, but they show up as way they want after the matter is gone. So recently I had a, I was involved in an accident with another motorcycle coming out of my driveway, and I feel bad for the person that got serious injuries because you guys now listening to what I'm saying around what's going on in my street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
The address is Everest Street, 12 Everest Street. No, Everett.
Everett.
Yes, it's in front of the park, the South Riverside Park, in that area. The next person line is Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell, reside 34 Cross Street in Lawrence. First, is the reopening of Bailey Street permanent, or is that just temporary until South Broadway is repaired? Next, does the public have any input on the internal rules that the City Council plays by? Are those rules off-limit, the city input, uh, citizen input? More on this subject later. Also, the last council meeting, you went into executive session at 10:10 PM and returned at about 11:40 PM. Do you think it's fair to continue a public hearing at that time of night when only two parties were present in the council chamber? One who wanted the deal consummated and the other who was concerned about the city moving out of a building that he represents. When will the citizens be privy to the negotiation and final financial arrangements that you discussed in your executive session? I have several interesting and possibly embarrassing questions and comments about the deal. Why does the city need to borrow eight-plus million dollars for a building that's only assessed at $652,600 bucks? From the city's assessors' records, the building last paid a little over $5,000 in taxes in 1997 on an unknown evaluation. How much is this building assessed at $652,600 worth on the tax rolls in 2015? The answer is $21,163.43. So in effect, the city has robbed the citizens of much-needed tax money. Now, if what I'm starting to hear about this purchase price isn't $7.4 million, a lot of money to be laying around loose, the cover loose ends after its purchase? Another question. Do you know what this building is? That's the General Donovan School on Cross Street. Was that ever considered as being part of the new school department headquarters? If not, how come? Did the overseer wave goodbye to that? Does he know about that? Now, a moral and ethical question for you. The vote on the rule was, the vote on the loan, was it by the rules? My question, is it ethically and morally correct for the council to take a vote on committing the city to a 12- to $14 million debt over 30 years with two councilors' absence? Those two councilors represent one-third of the city's population who apparently had no say in this unarmed robbery of city funds. With that, thank you for the time.
The next person line is Kathy Ronge.
Kathy Ronge, 32 Drackett Street. First, I had a couple little ideas. I'm glad the registry has put off its move to the downtown area, but maybe somebody's thought of this. Instead of, you know, forcing people to go to the downtown area, like, aha, they have to, we've got them, they're halfway there. When they're at this registry, why can't somehow you team up like restaurants, whatever, and give people that come out of the registry some little discounts if they want people to come to the restaurant? And then they might actually be tempted. You know, I'm just putting that out there. Secondly, these, and I'm not criticizing any potential ordinance here, but it really sort of worries me when documents from 2010 start appearing on the agenda. And I've been thinking about this for quite a while, first with tabled items, and when I was searching then, I found out that Boston has a sunset clause for its documents. And I really think that that, you should consider one. And, you know, the ordinances we're talking about, why couldn't you just recopy the text, slap a new number and year on it, and reconsider it if you want? But it just sort of scares me, honestly, having documents from five years ago just poof, appearing on the agenda. Lastly, alluding to something Mr. Malley talks about occasionally, there are four unions in this city that have not had a contract for a long, long time. Every other of the 20 unions, there are over 20 unions, every other one of them got retroactive pay raises when they settled. And now, the administration does not want to give the clerks, the supervisors, the DPW labors and water, some water personnel. They don't want to give them all of their back raises, and I really don't think that's fair. I mean, most of you up here are of that party that pretends to care about the little person, pretends. Well, I didn't mean to say that, but, you know, somebody should start caring about them. The police got all their retroactive money, they should have got the firefight, everybody did, except these four unions, these little people, and I'm, I know you, maybe you approve the contracts, I know you don't negotiate with them, but I'm just asking, you know, if you have a little bit of influence, you might think about using it. Thank you.
That concludes the public participation. Now we're going to the public hearings. Mr. Clerk.
Document 373 of 2014. Notice hereby given the City Council hold a public hearing Tuesday, May 19, 2015, in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public import concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be further amended by adding following paragraph to the parking, permit parking streets to be inserted in proper order. East Haverhill Street, west side from the intersection of Haverhill Street to intersection of Oak Street. To the extent there exist any other ordinances, to the contrary, they are repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published May 8.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against document 37314, residential parking for 6 to 8 East Haverhill Street? If there is none, councilors, what is your wish?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve. It has been properly seconded. Questions or comments? If there is none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, document 3515.
Document 35, 2015. Notice hereby given the City Council hold a public hearing Tuesday, May 19, in council chambers at 200 Columbus Street, 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public import concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances to be further amended by adding following new paragraph to the handicapped parking code. Essex Street, north side from 1.45 feet, west of the intersection of Warren Street to 1.65 feet, west of the intersection of Warren Street. To the extent there exist any other ordinances, to the contrary, they are repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on May 8.
Is anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against document 3515? If there is none, councilors, what is your preference?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve document 3515. It has been properly seconded, discussion?
I think council was just saying to waive the 30 days.
That's correct.
Okay. Motion is to approve and also waive the 30 days.
Second.
It has been properly seconded. If there is no discussion or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, document 5415.
Document 54, 2015. Notice hereby given the City Council hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 19, in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public import concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances by adding a following new paragraph to municipal code concerning parking to be prohibited on certain streets at all times to be inserted in proper order. East Gilbert Street, both sides from the intersection of South Broadway to its terminus. To the extent there exist any ordinances, to the contrary, they are repealed in that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against this document?
I think someone in the...
I'm sorry?
Yeah, it was someone in there.
Please identify yourself.
Yes. My neighbor was supposed to come with me, but she's sick, so she couldn't make it. I live, my name is Carmen Roman, and I live in 438 South Broadway Street, and that's on the side of East Gilbert Street. I don't find, for the past 30 years, there hasn't been a problem with no parking on either side. I consider that that shouldn't be a problem now. Also, in 2008, the street was refinished, and it was enlarged on the end of my driveway on each side. So I consider that I personally would not like that to be, I don't accept the fact that the street to be no parking because I don't see any problem with it. I would like for it to stay the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Please identify yourself.
Evening, councilors. I don't think you have a picture of East Gilbert Street. I'm Mrs., hi, I'm Mrs. Goslin, I live on East Gilbert Street. I would say that the street's length is maybe 70 feet or so, but anyway, the reason that I'm here is for public safety most of all. But anyway, the reason that I'm here is for public safety, most of all. The public safety is that the street is very narrow and very short. I've been there for forty years, and I've had to deal with it. I must be getting a little weak in my senior years because the issue of cruisers, ambulances, fire apparatus, whatever, with nothing blocking it, they could, you know, drive in pretty comfortably and probably take care of my home if anything were to happen. So, I think that that's all I'm asking for. There's been times when cars have been parked there. I don't know if it's drug activity, I can't answer that. I know one time it was a surveillance, but I didn't know that, I happened to go out and mention it. But I think it's mostly public safety that I'm concerned about, and I'm alone down there, and it's accessible from South Broadway. I guess, I don't know who this lady is, but she lives up on South Broadway. And that's about it. It's a public safety issue to me, being alone down there. So, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Go ahead.
No, I don't, I don't have a question. I just want to suggest, if it's possible at this point, that we can table this item until every one of us can drive by and just to see. Instead of, you know, because I drew by and I didn't see that it's that narrow, but, you know, I'm not expecting. So, you can have a chance that you can go and see if it's anything that we might can do, but we had the opportunity to hear both residents, so why we don't do this?
If you want to make the motion, let's wait until public participation is finished, okay?
Well, it's a good thing then I brought the picture then of the street, because I would have thought, Estelle, that you would have gone there before the meeting tonight because it's been almost two months that I've kind of waited to get here and do my thing, too. So, unfortunately, I know if I was sitting there and something was coming up, I would have gone out to see the work that needed to be done for the taxpayer, the person that lives there. There's only one house on the street, and that's me.
I noticed that, yes.
Now, when there's ice, when there's snow, it's very difficult for me to get out of there. But over the years, I've learned to be a pretty good driver to get out of there. I have seen trucks in there, whatever. I don't want to go into that, I can go into forty different stories, but it's a public safety issue to me and very important as I age. When I was younger, I used to snow blow what you're looking at by myself.
Yeah.
When I became a widow, that's what happened. So, that's all I'm saying. If you haven't been over there, it's a good thing I brought that paper because I don't know what to tell you. I think that you would have gone to check that out.
And I understand that, and I understand that, but the reason that I did that was because this is not part of my district, but I received a phone call, and I decided before I make any final decision, just to take the opportunity, just to see and see how it looked like. So, that's why I'm suggesting everybody just to stop by and see, so that way they can be conscious and they can be fair.
And I hate to be fresh, but you should have done your homework. I came down, I did mine, but all I'm saying is it's a public safety issue to me, and it's big. And I don't know if you have any other questions, I don't know what to tell you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to speak to this document? If there is none, councillors, what is your preference?
Motion to deny.
There's a motion on the floor to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'm sorry?
Discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Council President, through you. Would it facilitate for, is it like a one-side parking at the moment? Is that the situation? No?
Open parking.
Open parking. So, could it be like one-sided parking instead of just eliminating the entire situation so that we could do, you know, we could make a happy medium between both of the residents?
I believe that Councillor Bernard did some research. Would you like to speak about it?
Sure.
Thank you, Councillor Bernard. Thank you, Council President.
I just want to, in all deference and respect to my colleague, Councillor Reyes, she always does her homework. I'm very honored to have her on our team, and I think she, if you listen to what she actually said, she said, "I drove by." She didn't say she didn't drive by, she said, "I drove by."
Yes.
So, I think she was saying to let the other councillors have that opportunity to also drive by.
But thank you, thank you for saying that because I knew that she misunderstood.
Exactly.
And it's not, I'm not in a position just to be backing for. The reason that I'm speaking on behalf was because I did my homework.
Exactly. And I know you always do, and I just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Because I think there was a misunderstanding there.
Continue.
But that being said, I did have the.
I just wanted to say one thing, I'm sorry, didn't you say that?
Yeah, no, no, it's okay, it's okay, no problem.
The issue was raised at the subcommittee level that this was one of public safety. So, based on that comment, I had asked the fire chief if he would please drive by and look at the location. And he, I said, "Just take a peek." We were in the area anyway, I was like, "It's right down the street, can you just take a peek and let me know what you think?" And he said, "I'll actually do you one better." And he parked his large Ford Explorer SUV on the side of the road, and he asked the fire department to back a truck in, not drive it forward, back it in the most awkward way to do it. Then he took a photo that clearly shows ample room on both sides of the vehicle, and he said in writing, "That's not a problem, and we can get a vehicle down the street." He says, "The fire department with the deputy chief's Ford Explorer on the side of the street, we drove a ladder truck down the street and backed it into the street with no problem." So, based on that recommendation, it doesn't seem like there's a public safety issue. The concern was raised maybe to do parking on one side of the street versus to have it on no sides of the street because it is a relatively narrow street. We do need to preserve as much parking as we can in the city. But the fire chief said he can get a vehicle down that street when he has his big SUV parked on the edge of the street. So, I just want to make people aware that that.
Mr. Toomey, will you reconsider your motion of denial versus one side?
No, there's been no, there's been no parking signs on that, on that street at all for forty, fifty years. In other words, people can park down there if they want.
Yep.
Okay.
So, no, I'm not going to allow it.
Okay.
Your second.
Any further discussion before we take a vote on the, Mr. Plant? Are you, I'm sorry, are you finished?
Just, just one, one final thought before we, we yield the floor to Councillor Plant. If we were to put, because I'm thinking, you know, summer parking, if people were to park on both ends, that then there would be probably an issue if they were to try and come down the street for two vehicles to, you know, to try and come by. If maybe there were two large vehicles parked, say, two trucks on both ends, maybe somebody's having, you know, a little get-together or something. So, maybe that in the summer could be one-sided parking instead of on both sides, and that would alleviate a little bit of the maybe parking issue. But then you also have to look at that if we do do it that way, that if there, the days that they're going to be, you know, parking on the other side of the street.
You think like alternate parking?
That, yeah, that there would be a lot more cars parking in front of someone's house and then the other because of the alternate parking that would be done just for the summer.
It's only one house on the street.
Oh, there's only one house on the street.
Yeah, there's only one house on the street.
Yes.
It's a little dead end, but it's on the corner, so the lady, the public hearing is over, just to, for the record. The, the lady on the corner on occasion will park on that street. It's a public street, so that's the question is, just because there's one house on it, can only one resident park on the street?
Okay. With the driveway, right?
Let me.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And the, and, and the one person on the street does have driveway and everything else, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Maria, I'm going to allow Mr. Plant first, and then I will, Mr. Plant?
So, this is actually in my district, this is District F. And the way that the, the ordinance proposal has been crafted is not one that I can support because, well, what it fails to acknowledge is the fact that we do have a parking issue in the city, and that if you're going to make no parking on both sides of the street, you're taking away parking from a, from a public way. It's not a private driveway, this is a public way. I also, so that's one part of the argument. So, I don't agree with the fact that we should have no parking on both sides of the street. On the other side, if we allow for parking on both sides of the street, and the pictures bear this out, if you allow for parking on both sides of the street, you're not going to get a public safety vehicle through that street for that one house.
In any vehicle.
You're just not going to get there. It won't happen. Now, it defies in some respects common sense. Because if you park cars on both sides of the street, there is no way unless you start going onto the grass and doing something crazy to go over there, you just can't get there. However, having said that, what it makes a lot of sense from a pure government, if we take the personalities out of it and we just look at what is the most common sense thing to do. If you make one side of the street no parking, and you allow parking on the other side of the street, you ensure that there'll be none of this miscommunication or whatever, you ensure there's always going to be at least one lane available to go ahead and to access it should there be an emergency. Thankfully, there's been no emergencies. Thankfully, there's been, really at this point, that I can tell, there's been no need for this. But if we can take away that stuff, common sense would dictate that if you're going to have a law that prohibits or restricts, you're going to do it on one side and one side only. So, that's probably not going to make both parties happy. One party wants to have no parking on both sides, and one party wants to have parking on both sides. And to me, I'm not going to make myself the hero to either party on this one, I'm saying to make this thing make some sense, you don't have parking on one side, that way you allow, it's a public street, you let anybody park on there the way they want to park, but you also have some common sense and you allow the emergency vehicles to go through. So, there is a motion to, to deny. I don't think that's the proper motion this evening because we're just kind of kicking the can down or we're just ignoring it. So, I can't support that. I would, if, given my druthers, I would make an amendment to that, but I'm not sure I can amend a motion to deny as been, that's been offered tonight.
Are you withdrawing your second on the motion?
I second.
Oh, you second it? I thought it was you. I'm sorry.
I didn't second it.
Okay. You already heard Mr. Toomey that he don't want to change it, so once I give the privilege to Councillor Vasquez, we will go ahead and take a vote.
Mr. President, I'd like to thank Councillor Bernard for sending me, you know, a picture that clearly shows a worst-case scenario of a situation there, and I also had the opportunity to quickly Google the address, and on Google Maps, you know, it does show that it's a single home there at the end of the road. But when we look at the picture of the fire truck and the deputy chief vehicle, you could clearly see that it's parked right at the corner, which, you know, they made it worst-case possible, which means that there has to be twenty feet away from the intersection before any vehicle could legally park at any given point, meaning that a truck will have the opportunity to turn even at the, you know, what we saw in the picture is the worst-case scenario on earth. It's parked exactly at the corner of Broadway and East Gilbert. However, no vehicle is able to park there because of that twenty-feet regulation to occur. So, I think that we should leave it as is tonight because there's no tremendous impact. And also, by looking at a Google map from a satellite perspective, you're able to see that the majority of the homes, or every home there, has parking available. So, I will assume that, what, is it one car probably parking there every now and then? I don't think that, you know, it's vehicles that are taking up all this space every single day, twenty-four hours a day, like in other parts of the city. I can guarantee you that it's probably a car that will park there for a few hours here and there, and that will be it. It's not, you know, ten cars every single day.
Anybody else? There's a motion on the floor to deny the request. It has been properly seconded. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No?
So, motion to deny, Councillor Vasquez.
Yes.
Councillor Plant.
No.
Councillor Toomey.
Yes.
Councillor Reyes.
Yes.
Councillor Monte.
No.
Councillor Keno noted. Councillor Bernard.
I'm going to vote no.
Councillor Vice-President Alvarez Rodriguez absent, and Councillor President.
No.
Fails.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we prohibit parking from one side of the street.
Like the north side?
And that side being on the north side, north side of the street.
Which side will provide the greatest amount of parking?
What you, I think what you want to do is you want to have the apparatus go through on the right-hand side. So, I'm sorry, if you have no parking on the right-hand side, if you're police or fire, you can go in there easily. So, there'd be no parking on the southbound side.
Oh, I was thinking the opposite, I was thinking no parking on the north because the homeowner wants to get out. Like, she's can't, she's going to have to drive down the wrong side of the street to get out of her.
What side is the hydrant on?
Oh, this is the hydrant.
Marie, can you, can you come forward, please?
There's not enough information for you guys, one side of the street. There's nothing there. I want to make you understand, too. I get flooding down there. I have pictures. I didn't want to get into all of that, but the city put a berm. There's a berm on each side of the street. That berm prevents me from being flooded out. If you keep going up, you have to go up on that, there isn't any room, I'll be honest with you. You go up and you start breaking down that berm, I'll be calling the Department of Public Works to come and fix it. That's an expense because that berm from Broadway keeps the water going straight through down and through to South Street. It doesn't go up on the properties if you're coming down on the left. They get water in their cellars, and this berm kind of helps. And then the woman down the other end, and unless you've experienced it, I don't know how you can even mention that.
Marie, let me ask you.
I, I don't know what to say, I can get pictures and show you.
But how does the parking affect the berm?
Huh?
How does the parking affect that?
Well, you're going to have to park on the hot top unless you go up on the, on the grass. And then if you start going up on that, you break the berm, there's flooding down there. Now, I don't know, I personally have cleaned out South Broadway, the catch basins. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight catch basins for the water to go down, and it doesn't go down. There's so much water that comes through there. In the wintertime, anything, little ice or anything like that, you can't, I can't get through if anybody's parked up there. I mean, there's not a lot of cars that are parked up there, but if there's ever that time when it happens, I just can't get through there. And I'm the only one down there. It's only one house, just to make you understand, and that's me.
Marie, for the purpose of the motion that Mr. Plant is trying to make, which side will provide the greatest amount of parking?
I didn't hear you.
Which side of the street will provide the greatest amount of parking and less disturbance?
For me to get out of my house, I have to back up, back up all the time. So, when I pull out, I go up, I don't want the right side touched at all, that prevents flooding. Cost me ten thousand dollars years ago for the ruining my house.
So, the south side would be better for parking?
I don't know which is south, and when you come out on the right, if you're coming in, the left side.
If you are going into, from the house.
Protects my house.
If you are going east into Broadway, the right side.
Right side.
From your house, the right side will be south.
That prevents, that prevents my house from being flooded.
Left side would be north.
I really thank you for that.
You're on the north side. Your house is on the north side.
Huh?
Your house is on the north side.
Okay.
So, you want that side parking or no parking? That's the question.
Well, if it, to protect that berm and flooding in my house, that side, absolutely.
No parking on the north side.
The north side.
So, you can park on the south side.
So, your motion, your motion is.
I thank you for that.
Park on the north side, and so people can park on the south side.
I could show you pictures now, I don't know if it'll change your mind.
That's, that's fine, thank you, Marie. There's a motion on the floor to allow parking on.
Restrict parking on the north.
The south side only.
Right, right. No parking on the north side.
No parking on the north, okay. Is there a second?
Well, I have another question for you. How far down you're going to have that parking on that side?
I think we will, we will allow.
In front of my house?
Well, however it is now.
How is it now? So, I can get out. I can back out.
We're just restricting parking in one area. We're not adding any parking.
No, well, you're saying on, if I was going out the driveway, you're talking on the left-hand side. Coming in, it's on the right-hand side, right?
That's correct, yes.
That's what I'm saying. My, for me to back out, it's on the tip of my property so I can back out and to go out.
Okay.
And nobody can turn around down there because they all come in my driveway. The line is my driveway.
Marie, what we need to do is to.
Shame on you.
We will need to ask the DPW department to do proper marking to the level.
It has to be marked up, that's right.
Okay.
There's no problem with parking up on the lawn up there. That's been going on for a long time. It's the hot top that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the grass or talking about the hot top. That's the part that's.
Motion has been made.
Mr. President?
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. President, the other resident who was here before also would like to say a few words in reference to the change.
Would you come forward?
I don't even know who this lady is. She goes up on the side.
In fairness, in fairness, okay? The side that she says that she wants the parking sign on, I go in there, I don't park all the time, but I do have access to it. I have, I park there, not all the time. There's, there are sometimes. She says she doesn't know who I am. I happen to be living there for 13 years. So, I don't understand why, but anyways. To me, the best thing is not to have parking at all because, again, it's just, why if in 30 years or 40 years, if she says she lives there?
You live on the south side.
I live.
On the south side of the street. And so, we're going to allow parking on the south side of the street?
On my side, right.
So, everything's?
We don't always park there. It's once in a blue moon that we park there.
So, the one, this is a blue moon when you need to park there, you can.
That's right.
So, what is the thing about having one side no parking? I don't understand.
So, the other side of the street, the north side of the street?
So, in other words, if somebody comes and parks there and it says no parking, were they going to get a ticket?
Not on your side, on the other side, yeah, they would get a ticket.
Yes, yes.
Across the street from you.
I, no, I totally disagree with that. I don't, I don't, I totally disagree.
But you can't fit two cars on that street and get a third car down the middle.
No, but common sense, no, people are not going to park two cars knowing that that neighbor has to go in there, okay? It just doesn't happen because the only one that parks there.
Is you.
If, is my family and I always tell them.
Right. So, the proposal that was made is exactly consistent with what you already do. You can still park on the south side of the street. That's what she wants. That's what you want. So, why wouldn't you just let them?
You can still do what you're doing now.
Do exactly what you're doing.
I totally don't want it. I totally disagree on it.
Why?
Sorry. Because, again, we go again back to always, she always has to have things done her way for her convenience. It always happens.
Miss.
It never fails.
Miss.
I'm sorry.
Let's not get on a personal matter. Let's do.
I'm sorry.
Let's do what we have at hand. We are trying to find a solution that is reasonable for both.
Yes, I do understand that.
And the motion that is being made is very reasonable. And what I would like to do is allow the city council to discuss it. So, I would not allow any more discussion from the public, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
The hallway is closed.
Let me, Marie, Marie, let me stop at that. Thank you. Counselor, there is a motion on the floor to not allow parking on the north side of the street. Motion has been properly seconded. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? If there is nobody else, let's vote on the motion. Or in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
No.
Okay. Roll call.
Counsel Vice President noted, Counsel Bernal.
Yes.
Counselor Aquino noted and Counsel Monte?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes?
No.
Counsel Toomey?
Nope.
Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez?
No.
Counsel President?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to reconsider? It was on the prevailing side of Counsel Toomey's earlier motion, to withdraw the document or?
You want to make a motion to reconsider Mr. Toomey's motion?
Yeah.
Okay. There is a motion to reconsider the motion of Mr. Toomey. Is there a second to that?
Second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? If there is none, let's take a vote. This motion is to reconsider Mr. Toomey's.
Motion to deny.
Deny, deny the motion.
Okay. So, let's take a vote or in favor.
Leave them as they stand now.
I'm sorry?
Then we'll leave them as they stand right now.
There's a motion on the floor to reconsider Mr. Toomey's motion to deny. Let's take a vote. Again, we're not taking a vote to approve the motion, but simply to reconsider. Am I correct?
It's a.
You sound the prevailing side.
She's on the prevailing side.
Because his thing failed, but I voted against it.
Right.
Okay.
This is the actual motion?
So, is the actual motion to?
To deny.
Deny. Okay.
That's correct.
Okay. Let's take, let's take a vote. Mr. Toomey?
If we vote yes and no, does that my motion?
It would be denied.
It would be denied.
Yes. Okay. Or in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
Um, no.
Wait.
Counsel Toomey?
Yes.
Try giving them what they want.
Counsel Monte? Counsel Aquino noted. Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President noted and Counsel President? Motion denied, passes, 5-2.
It leaves them in the exact same situation they're in right now. Every other solution they're proposing, which were very good compromises, nobody was happy, so.
Okay, let's, no more discussion on this matter. Mr. Clerk? Document 6915.
Document 69, 2015. Notice hereby given the City Council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, May 19th in Council Chambers at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinances for the city to launch to be amended by adding the following new paragraph to the handicap parking section, Berkeley Street East Side, from a point 145 feet northerly of the intersection of Berkeley Court to a point 165 feet northerly in the intersection of Berkeley Court. To the extent that any ordinances are to the contrary, they are hereby repealed to that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published May 8.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against document 6915? If there is none, Counsel, what is your preference?
Motion approved, second.
There is a motion on the floor to approve document 6915. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Waive the 30 days, please. Could we please waive the 30 days?
The motion includes to waive the 30 days. Let's take a vote. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, document 8615.
Document 86, 2015. Notice hereby given the City Council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, May 19th in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendments to the revised ordinances by deleting the current section of municipal code concerning commercial parking prohibited on certain streets and inserting in its place instead a new section of the municipal code concerning the same matter in regard to stating that no person shall park or leave standing on any street or portion thereof in the city of Lawrence, any commercial vehicle having manufactured gross vehicle weight of 10,000 pounds or more or any full-size bus, including school buses. The prohibition imposed shall not apply to the parking or standing of such vehicles for the purpose of making pickups and deliveries from the building or structure or for delivering materials or providing a service to be used in repair, alteration, and remodeling of any such building or structure for which the building permit has been obtained. Section B stating notwithstanding the general prohibition of school bus parking contained in the first section A, any Lawrence resident school bus driver may obtain a school bus parking placard from the Lawrence Police Department by showing proof of current residence. Once issued the placard, it shall be displayed openly on the bus driver's window whenever the vehicle is parked on a city street. When properly displayed, the resident driver may park a school bus assigned to him on or her on any street or portion thereof during school hours on days when school is in session. It shall not be a defense to enforce enforcement of this ordinance that the bus driver possessed a placard but failed to display it. The sections C and D remain the same, essentially that providing for enforcement and fines and violations and towing. Persons wishing to be heard on this matter shall be afforded the opportunity as published on May 8.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against? If there is none, Counselors, what is your preference?
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
There is a motion on the floor to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
I'm going to quote this question. Why was this introduced? What's the, what's the issue that we're trying to deal with?
There are people who live in the city that drive buses for the school and the parking area for the company is way, way out of the city, in another, another city or sometimes state. And by the time, if they have to park outside, there is an ordinance that we have that prohibit the parking of vehicles, commercial vehicles on local streets. And what the ordinance committee decided was to give only those individuals who live in the city, who live in the city and drive those buses, and to give them a special permit during the time that they are driving the school bus.
Park in front of their houses or?
Yes, yes. So, nobody else, if they move, if they move, then, and they stop driving the school bus, obviously that parking will be, would have to be returned.
And does that include off-hours? For example, 9 o'clock at night when the buses?
Yeah, normally it's between the school hours, between.
Basically, we talked about doing it as, sorry, basically we talked about doing it as an exemption for school buses, but all they really wanted it was during the school day, between, you know, 7:00 and 2:00 or 7:00 and 3:00. Because sometimes they'll actually do a second run. They might do a half-day kindergarten that they're bringing them home. They only have an hour or two. There's not enough time to go all the way to Tewksbury, all the way to Drake it. But right now, the way it's written, if they park the school bus right in front of their own home, they're subject to a ticket. So, if they go home for lunch or go to the bathroom or whatever it is, they have a problem. So, it seemed like this proof of residency, you know, seemed like a good solution and it specifically says only during school days, during school hours. This is not to allow for overnight parking of buses on the street. This is strictly during the school day.
Okay, got it. That's paragraph B.
Yeah.
Ms. Toomey?
Just a question. When I was going through this today, I noticed that in the letter that was submitted by the bus drivers evidently because they all signed it, they referenced the city ordinance of 1388.02. And I spoke to the clerk about that and I don't know if he's able to come up with anything on that. Do you have a, nothing?
You think they referenced the wrong ordinance?
It must be a misreference. I can't find it.
Can't find anything on that. Okay.
Are there any other comments or questions? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay. Counselors, I would like to take document 19714 out of order. Can I have a motion to take document 19714?
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Counselors, we requested National Grid to send a representative to give us an update and Susan Griffin, who is here representing National Grid, came graciously enough to give us an update. Thank you, Susan, for coming.
Sure.
So, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. President, Council members. My name's Susan Griffin and I'm the program manager for Customer and Community at National Grid. I'm new to this role and I understand that you had some questions about double poles in the city.
Yes, basically, Susan, what we have done in the past is that we complained to National Grid about leaving too many double poles for quite a long time. And we asked National Grid to correct the problem. As a matter of fact, we made a threat that we will not allow National Grid to do any work in the city unless they correct the problem. So, it was an understanding that National Grid will give us an update as to how many double poles are in the city and what actions is National Grid taking to remove those double poles.
Sure. So, just to give you some background on that, I've been in this job about 100 days and I would say double poles are the hottest, most passionate issue across the Merrimack Valley. I understand for residents to have a double pole in front of their house, I know that it's distressing. Across the utility industry, Verizon, Comcast, National Grid, we've actually been porting over to a new system, a new pole management system. In the old system, the way it worked, it was very manual. You would have a nomenclature called balling court. So, to have any pole removed, any double pole, National Grid has to come off first. So, we're the tallest wires on the pole. Ours are the most dangerous wires and for anyone else to do their work, we need to come off first. So, we're always the one to come off first and then it goes down sequentially. It's usually Verizon followed by Comcast. And then sometimes on those poles, you may have security system or police fire alarms on those poles and those would come off last. Within each city, there's a pole set manager. Here in Lawrence, National Grid is the pole set manager. So, the very last step is to remove the pole and then to resurface the area. So, that's generally how the process works. In the old system, there was no communication other than verbal communication and coordination between the utilities to get the next person in line off the pole. We've ported it over to a new system. It's called Engines. And that system actually, as soon as we update and notify that we've transferred off of a pole, it triggers an email to the next person in line, the next company in line, and they know that it's their turn. So, it's a much more automated system. It's going to be better communication. The system just went live April 15th. So, we're just doing all of our updates in that system now. At the same time, Verizon hired an auditor to go across all the communities and actually count each double pole and determine who's next in line. And we've just, over the last week and a half, two weeks, completed all that input into the system. So, with all that said, the way it stands in Lawrence today, based on the information that I have for National Grid, is that there are 112 double poles.
112?
112.
In the city of Lawrence?
In the city of Lawrence that I have visibility to. Of those, 98 are ready to be pulled.
How many?
98.
98?
Are in pull-pole status. And so, I've actually been working with Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Mateus in the DPW to start to schedule some of these high-priority requests. And just over this last Saturday, we removed a double pole on Beacon Ave and we're scheduled to remove one at 257 Mount Vernon. There's a CATV cable. We think it's Comcast cable on that pole. As soon as that moves off, we'll be able to cut the pole, remove it, and resurface the area. the area.
Susan, when you say that 98 are ready to be pulled, does that mean that all the wires have been transferred to the new one?
Based on what I can see in the system, and you'll have to forgive me, it's a new system, so I'm still learning how to read the information correctly. But the report that I received yesterday, there's a summary portion of it, and that's what it says. It says there's 98 ready to be pulled. And so, what I would like to do is work on a priority list by street. One of the things that we do is we look at your paving plan. And if I can coordinate removing poles in that area where you're going to be paving anyway, that makes good sense, because those streets will probably be shut down for paving work and other things going on, less disruption, less traffic concerns. And then from there, we can, I can work with your DPW department or whoever you'd like me to, and we can set up a plan to start removing street by street, the double poles. So, it's a two-phase process, just to keep that in mind. There's one crew that goes out and actually cut and kicks or pulls the pole, and then there's another crew that follows behind them to do the restoration of the sidewalk.
Okay. Ms. Toomey?
That was my question. When you say pull, you're actually pulling the pole out of the ground. You're not sawing it in half.
Correct. They actually pull it out. There is something called a cut and kick, which is if everyone is off the pole but one, we have an agreement with Verizon where we cut it at the base. Those are the poles that you see, two-thirds of a pole anchored to another pole. That's called a cut and kick. And the last person off the pole is responsible for taking the second piece of the pole away.
Okay. Mr. Vasquez, and then Ms. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, to you. When are we scheduled to begin this process? I know you mentioned we have 98 ready to be pulled. When are we scheduled to begin?
So, what I've been doing over the last few months on this job is I've been working with Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Mateus, based on their priorities that they've brought to me to remove double poles. We were hampered. Normally, that work would have started April 1st, but because we had so much ground frost, our construction, we don't pull poles in the middle of winter, largely because we can't resurface, and because we also can't get the full pole out with ground frost. I don't need to tell anyone about the snow and the winter that we've had, but what essentially happened is we were roughly 28 days late into our construction season because of ground frost. So, the first time that we started pulling poles was April 28th. So, we don't have a great, we don't have a lot of headway at this point, but I can set up a schedule with National Grid's crew each week to, you know, pull a number of poles across the city and resurface the area.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know what the best approach to do that would be, whether to work with your DPW and prioritize those.
Okay. Councilor Reyes?
Thank you, Councilor President, and good evening, Mrs. Griffin. This has nothing to do with double poles, but how do you work with the city when we report that we need to change lights or we have some kind of problems? How do you work with our city?
So, there's two paths you can take. You can call into National Grid's customer service line and report that street light out, and that goes into a work request system. Or you can call me directly or email me. And I have, we actually have someone on staff in the North Andover office, and she's dedicated full-time to streetlights. So, streetlight outages, whether they're underground lights or overhead-fed, LEDs, replacement bulbs, customer-owned, we have that built into our database.
And how long that usually takes when someone plays or make the first phone call or exchange email to update or fix the problem?
It can vary, and that's not a great answer, but the truth of it is, if it's overhead-fed, it's much easier to repair, because it's easy to get at. And I know a lot of cities and towns like underground utilities, but it does become challenging, particularly in the winter, because if it's an underground-fed light, there's a lot that has to go into figuring out where the problem is underground with that. And if it's city-owned lights, we go up to what's called the handhole for those lights. But to answer your question directly, it could take anywhere from a week or a day, if it's a safety emergency, to something as long as three weeks.
I just want to ask Mr. Icens to come to the podium, because we've been reporting for over a month some lights on Haver Street, which is...
306 Haver Street.
Yes, and I'm sure that you receive hundreds of phone calls, emails, and I call every day, every single day. And the last answer that I get today was that when someone called, you couldn't give any update. So, it sounds like you didn't know what they were talking about, or I don't know, you know, how many times have you been receiving the notice? But this has been going on, not for a week, not for two weeks, months.
So, I will say, Mr. Mateus has been diligent about following up with me. I think it came to my attention, I want to say, three weeks ago. What was involved in that is we initially sent a crew out, and we thought it was overhead-fed. We determined that it was underground-fed, and then the crew went out on Friday, and they have, what I do know at this point, I know it has not been resolved, but what I do know is that there's a piece of equipment that's needed to repair that. So, I didn't get a chance to speak to the underground supervisor before this meeting, but I did put a call into him, and I did actually speak to Mr. Mateus, I think at 5:00 this evening. He was calling to check up on that.
So, do you have any idea when that's going to happen, even though you...
I'm going to follow up first thing in the morning with the overhead supervisor. He comes on, I'm sorry, the underground supervisor comes on at 7:00 a.m. And I have pressed this within my own company as a safety issue. I understand there are five lights in a row that are out there.
Do you have any direct number that I can contact you? Because I'm not going to be calling them every day. I think, you know, this is time that I have to release them and just to take responsibility to this, because when I have to pass that update, I'm the one keep lying to them. You know, they've been coming here almost every week, reporting the same problem, and it's a problem. It is a problem. So, is any direct number that I can call you tomorrow just to see?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Actually, I'll give you my cellphone number.
Okay, you can give it to her, so that way you don't have to give it in public, and I can take it from her?
Sure. And thank you. And I appreciate it, and I apologize. It shouldn't take that long, you're right, and it is a safety issue. When five streetlights in a row are out, that's a safety issue, and it's not acceptable.
Believe me, all the items that we have in this agenda tonight is important, but when I saw that you was going to be coming tonight, I say, you know, I can't miss this. I have to, I have to take this opportunity to say that, because even when they call me, they think I'm lying today, because the last report we had was that you were supposed to start working on May 4th, and today is May 19th. So, it's taken such a long time, and I didn't understand the reason why. And not because I didn't believe when I called the DPW, but I got that poor guy crazy every single morning, every single morning I have to call.
I don't know where the May 4th date came from, I'll be candid with you. There are a number of pre-checks and steps that we go through, but I take your point loud and clear. In this one, there's no question about it. We clearly dropped the ball somewhere, and I will make it a priority.
And believe me, I didn't want you to be in that position, and I didn't want to put you in that position, but, you know, sometimes we just have to kind of stay in the level. Like, when someone say, you know, you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, because many of those people, they think this is the only job we have, we don't have nothing else to do, and we have to answer, and we have to give an answer every single time they call. So, when we have someone in person that we can point and say, it's not my fault, it's not that I'm trying to put you in that position, but unfortunately...
No, that's exactly my role, so that's okay. And I will say this, that I do understand that double poles, streetlights, streetlights out, all of those issues are very important to our customers.
Well, you were present here when, early this evening, when someone say, you didn't do your homework, and, you know, and sometimes we just have to keep it inside, and I say, you know, what else we can do? So, I can't go personally just to say, you know, you have to give an answer, and I have to tell them the truth, because that doesn't happen that way. But I'm glad to see you tonight, and hopefully you can give me the phone number, and I can say whatever they want to hear.
And I will say on both issues, I think we can do better.
Susan, I hope that your first 100 days have been enjoyable. Thank you for coming.
Sure.
I would like you to consider if it is agreeable to you to come back on August 4th.
August 4th, sure.
It's the first Tuesday of August, so you can give us an update again on what is happening with the information that you gave us.
I look forward to sharing good news.
I hope so. Thank you. Thank you, Susan, for coming.
Thank you.
Motion to table? So moved. Is there a second? Motion had been made and properly seconded. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Counselors, document 15214, we have Teresa Park from the Planning Department, and she is here to give us an update. Hopefully, a lot of good things. You're going to use a projection, okay?
Oh, my God.
So, good evening, Council President, councilors, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present some of the things that have been going on in the Office of Planning and Development. So, it's been about 10, it's been about, excuse me, about 10 months since the council approved the reorganization that allowed us to consolidate the various different operations in the city that go, that cover primarily the planning, development, and code enforcement activities. And I would say that probably in the 10-month sense, it has been a fruitful reorganization to the extent that, you know, just to report back to you, communications has been stronger. And the way that we as a department are able to address distressed properties, address code enforcement issues, basically address everything from planning to permitting to enforcement, has been getting better, and it's something that we see as a continuous work in progress. So, what I'm going to be going over is a number of different initiatives that are currently going on in the Office of Planning and Development, and I think it's important for a couple of different things. One is to give you an understanding of basically the areas where work is underway, whether it's planning or actual infrastructure work, and as well as by passing this information on to you, then, when you have constituents that are coming to you with these kind of questions, then you're better informed about what is actually happening, and we're able to, and are able to either refer to us or answer the questions. So, what you see to begin with are the planning initiatives that I will go through one by one. And what you're looking at is approximately about $1.25 million worth of planning efforts that are going on. And to start with, I will mention the Merrimack Street West, and this is something that you're familiar with, because for a couple of different things. One, which is, well, I should say Merrimack Street, because we came before you to receive a $3.95 million MassWorks grant, of which $250,000 was carved out for a planning study. So, there are two components that were mentioned. One, which is the roadway improvement project that covers Merrimack Street between I-495 and South Union Street, and I will talk about that later on. This is the portion that continues to extend east from South Union towards South Broadway. And what we're looking to do is catch the some of the economic development that's currently occurring in the Westerly portion, and do some initial legwork, and do some planning and land use study, and look at some development scenarios, so that ultimately we could identify the infrastructure upgrade that may be needed going forward, so that we could continue to support additional development and economic development activity. So, what we're hoping to do with this is identify sort of some preferred alternative scenarios, and then thinking about the demands on our infrastructure, and be positioned then to be queued up, I guess, for some infrastructure grant sources that are out there. This is an announcement that recently was made by the USCPA, whereby the city received a $200,000 grant. And what this will allow us to do is do a combination of spurring economic development as well as really enhancing the quality of life along this rail corridor. And if you were to see it now, it just looks like a very much an abandoned, long stretch of property. I think there's some great potential for reuse that could occur there, that not only will better connect to the existing rail trail that's up in Muthun, but as well as identifying nodes of increased commercial activity that could translate to better services for the neighborhood, as well as additional jobs for the residents. And actually, can you go back for one second? We did just have a kickoff with the EPA in May, and we'll be initiating the study portion very soon. This is, so this is Urban Renewal Plan, and I don't want to get people riled up by the term "urban renewal." But what this will allow us to do is, we did receive some money from the state, $175,000. And the money was received by the Redevelopment Authority, and they will be then able to use that funds to procure a planning consultant, who will then work with the city, or actually say, the Redevelopment Authority in the city, to look at how we can, again, spur economic development, utilizing some of the state, the tools that's afforded under the urban renewal legislation. And I think what that does is, where there are some very underutilized properties, I think there's some new tools that could be brought to bear. People often think about, immediately think about eminent domain, but I think there's bigger sets of tools and other benefits that could come out of this, out of this strategy. We are in the very early stage. What you see as far as a project area is not the urban renewal area. What that shows is a various studies that are currently going on, as well as have occurred in the past, and it actually lays the baseline of area that we could look at as we go forward. This is all going to be defined through a very extensive community process that will be engaged by the, by whoever planning consultant is hired. So, the Public Safety Center. So, this stems, actually, definitely predates me, and this is made possible through a $400,000 that was designated to do some preliminary study on a Public Safety Center for the city. So, Langland, president of Northern Essex Community College, as well as Senator Finkel at the time, really worked very hard to procure that funds to get this study launched. And we did work with the state to come up with some, excuse me, to really investigate what alternative really makes sense for the city. So, they looked at everything, from a standalone police headquarters to a combined facility. And in the end, what was determined that made the most sense, that could accommodate the public safety needs, that could support the Northern Essex Community College's growing criminal justice program, as well as sort of really being able to up the training, as well as the physical facility that's of our police headquarters. I'm sure you have all seen the headquarters in Torre. It's basically not our shining pride as far as public buildings are concerned. And so, what that study did find is that there is an estimated cost of $70.65 million. And while the initial planning study was done, it doesn't end there. There has to be some legwork that needs to be done in order to try to obtain that funding. And even though it's not visible, there are activities whereby we are continuing to advocate and identify funding opportunities, as well as meeting with partners, stakeholders, legislators who might be able to support the city in this endeavor. Couple of different studies that are currently underway. One is a comprehensive housing study that really does a, and I don't think one has been done in the past, but the study will, is a detailed look at the housing trends, housing stock, basically looking at the supply and demand, in order to help guide us as far as what is the housing market in the city, where are we going with this, and how can we best utilize our resources? And I also want to recognize Council of Plan, who has been involved in the Steering Committee and involved in working with us in progressing this. This is, this will be completed next month, at which point we will certainly make that available. I'm sure that we could also present probably some of the executive findings from that report. So, the other study that had occurred previously, that from which this street conversion idea comes out of, is the Downtown West Study. And we're going to be receiving final copies of that report, but we're looking at a couple of, one of the recommendations that came out of that report is the potential to convert some of our streets from a one-way to two-way system, to help with the navigation, help allow people to get to their destination more quickly and safely, to allow for, to some extent, when you have wider streets, people, cars tend to travel faster. So, by allowing for two-way conversion, not only can you get to your destination faster, but other users of the street system can also use it more safely as well. So, we are working closely with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to look into the feasibility of converting both Amesbury and Hampshire Streets into, from a one-way to two-way system, and we're currently in the data collection stage. And consolidated plan is something that is required by HUD, and what this does is, it sets the guide for then how we allocate HUD's CDBG funding, and that will be submitted to HUD at the end of this week. And I refer to Downtown West Study. The study is complete, and we should have the actual physical copies of the document within the next couple of weeks. In addition to the planning studies, we also have some park projects. Jim Barnes was here earlier. He's the primary go-to person, him along with Su-Fink. But we'll go through those just to give you an overview of what's happening. Some of them, I'm sure you already have seen. The North Common, which is just right across the street, we're in the Phase 3 of that project. And the project is anticipated to be done, I think, by the end of this month, which will allow for some of the events that are scheduled to occur on the Common next month to happen. There's been great progress that's been made, and thankfully, the good weather will continue to support its progress. The Spring Park has, it did go through some different iterations as far as identifying a location for it, but it did land off of Newbury and East Haver, and we will be having a groundbreaking of that, of that park in the very near future. The first site was made possible by a substantial grant, $2.75 million grant from the state. There has been some substantial clearing to the site. What you see on that, on the projector being projected is sort of the... is sort of the overview of what that final park will look like. It, it is progressing fairly rapidly. And again, that park is anticipated to be completed by the end of this year. This is one, one of the newer ones that we've been working on. And this is a project that's right off of Crawford Street in Osgood. And it will be going out to bid in July. And so you should be seeing some work there very soon as well. And in addition to that, we have been successful in either queuing up projects for funding from Mass DOT or applying for funds to do some additional infrastructure work beyond what we're able to do through Chapter 90. One, which is the one you're already familiar with, which is the Merrimack Street. And we have gone out to bid on this. We are in the process of negotiating with the low bidder. And we're hoping that to break ground on that very soon. We're still targeting for the end of this calendar year to, to complete the project. Prior to the construction, we will have a public meeting with the stakeholders on the street to let them know about what they can expect and make sure that we maintain an open line of communication so that should there be any issues, then they know how to reach us to address them. Park and Lawrence intersection, that was, that's just going to be a Mass DOT project. And we are currently scheduled to go out to bid in August of this year. We're in the process of working with various affected property owners as well as letting businesses know of what is going to be occurring at that intersection. And there are some easements that would need to be obtained that would allow us to continue to proceed with the construction. And that's what's in the works now. Again, this is made possible by funding from Mass DOT. And we're going to see some great enhancement on Union Street nearby, from Essex to Island. And so, and Bruce Day brought to school another Mass DOT project whereby Mass DOT, in trying to support safe commute to schools, basically designs and constructs the roadway improvement. In this instance, we have asked them to take on a couple of other streets because their condition was, it was in really poor condition. So in addition to Milton Street, which they were looking to do, they will also be doing the design for Butler and Providence. Actually, the Providence is marked there, but Butler and Providence. And then we will then be able to use the Chapter 90 money to actually make the roadway improvements to the other two streets. And this work is something that's going on right now, where we're making improvements to the alleyway as well as the parking in the, in the area. Work is going as expected, and we hope to be completed by, by August. I'm sorry, end of June. So we're actually even, even, yeah, pushing the schedule. Okay, next one. And then actually, these next few slides, I know you have a big agenda. I don't want to take too much of your time. These were some of the accomplishments that was reported to you through the mayor, state of the city. And so I just include that just as far as, in addition to some of those planning, infrastructure and park activities, there are more, there are other things that are occurring from a day-to-day basis. And this just sort of goes over them. So planning, economic development. I do have copies of the presentation for everybody. So you can read all this at your leisure. And then lastly, in addition to all those things, there are a number of other things that we're also working on, which is, you know, brownfields activities, looking at receiverships, taxidermy properties, and more recently, how we could deal with fire damaged properties. And I think this is a slide that really shows why that reorganization is really important because it's only through planning and code enforcement that we're able to target, identify what are some of the specific needs that we have in these neighborhoods. And then think about from whether from a policy standpoint or from a resource standpoint, think about what we need to bring to bear in order to address some of these challenges. And then the last slide, I think it's really more for the viewing audience because you all know how to reach us. But if you need to reach us for any reasons regarding anything that was presented here tonight, I'm here, Abel's here to join us at this. And as I mentioned, Jim had to leave earlier. But any of us are reachable if you have any follow-up questions. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them. And I'm going to go ahead and hand out. Thank you.
Teresa, I have a, I have a couple of questions. Can you send down the, is there another copy of that? First of all, thank you. Thank you for providing us with this report. Ms. LaPlant and I have been discussing the South Common. And we would like the planning department to look into the possibility of doing some redevelopment there, some development in the park, grants, look for grants, get some feedback from the neighborhood, and hopefully do a lot of the work that we are doing in the north to do it on the South Common. And this is something that Mr. LaPlant and I probably would be willing to sit down with you to discuss. The other, the other project that Mr. LaPlant and I have been working for a number of years, but we haven't been able to accomplish much because of the amount of time that requires, is the, the use of the alleyways. The alleyway has been a problem, a tremendous problem in the city. Drugs, prostitution, the dumping of garbage, and total uncontrollable situation on the alleyways. Most of the alleyways are located on the south. There are some on the north. But obviously, it will require a substantial amount of time on the part of Mr. LaPlant and I to really get the community together and neighborhood and adjacent owners of the alleys. And we would like the planning department to really take that project and see whether we can get rid of the alleyways because that's the objective. Get rid of the alleyways and divide either, we know that it's going to take individual solutions block per block. But we would like the planning department to really look into that, whether through the use of grants or simply through the use of coordinating efforts in getting the owners, the adjacent owners of the alleys to take ownership of the alleys and help, with the help of the planning department, to design strategies that will eliminate completely all the alleyways. So those are, those are two things that I wanted to mention. Counselors, are there any questions for Ms. Parks?
Don't eliminate all the alleyways. I had just a couple of quick comments.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Thank you for that update. It actually is really helpful. Sometimes you forget all the other good things that are going on in the city. So I appreciate you being here tonight. I know when they initially were talking about the Spray Park, at one point it was in the Common. I thought you had it at a different park now, is that?
I'm sorry?
The Spray Park that you showed us? That's not in the Common anymore now? What park is it in?
It's the point that's right near the Lawrence Community Works.
Okay, sure. Yep, all right, great, thank you. And I was excited to see the Downtown West. I felt like since the time that the registry got pulled out of that corridor, pretty much things west of the Common have been, there's been such a nice pushover on Merrimack Street, such a big push towards Salvatores and good things going on that way. I'm glad to see the Downtown West starting to get revitalized. I think that that side of the seesaw is getting some attention, which I think is really important. And one, obviously, we don't need to resolve this tonight, but excited about the development over at the Kane School. I know some soccer fields and other things are going in over there, too. But the last few years, that's been kind of a luxury for us, serving as our snow farm. I know as we make that something more desirable, just to kind of think about where we are going to have our snow farm.
Yeah, well, we haven't, well, hopefully, we won't have another winter like the one we just had. So I don't think that has been fully vetted yet.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know if John's able to respond to that just yet, but.
There's something to start thinking about, I guess, yeah.
You know, I know that we've had to utilize other locations in the past, whether it's the Pemberton Park or otherwise. So ultimately, that's, we'll need to find some other locations.
But no, I really appreciate the update tonight. That was really helpful, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Teresa, thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity. Have a good evening.
I would like you, Teresa, I would like you to consider those two items that I mentioned. Thank you. Let's go ahead to Document 12715.
Mr. President, should we withdraw the document or?
I'm sorry?
Should we withdraw this document? Or does he automatically get withdrawn?
Hmm, we don't, we don't.
Well, it technically will not be withdrawn that way. It'll just, it'll be filed. And that if it needs to be brought back, it can be marked up again if necessary. Somewhat like tabling, but it's, it's not withdrawn.
Mr. Vasquez, Document 12715.
Sure. Document 12715 is a transfer of funds from the airport department return earnings account on the amount of $22,060.33. And it had been placed on the agenda by Sharon Bershle, who's the airport commissioner chairwoman. This item came with no recommendation from the subcommittee. And I would like to present it as a committee report. I might make that informal motion.
Second.
Motion to be made to accept it as a committee report. It has been properly seconded, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, continue.
Sure. Mr. President, this item came with no recommendation due to the fact that we did not have the, a copy of the contract of employment for airport commissioner or airport manager at the time. I did receive a copy of the contract. I don't know if all members of Budget and Finance did receive it. I'm not sure if it made it to the package. I don't think it did. There was something else that was pending as well, which is signatures from the mayor, overseer, and director of budget and finance in regards to whether or not they approved this measure. And particularly, what we were discussing is that the airport manager was not paid an increase that was, that should have happened during the fiscal years 2011, 2012, and 2013. And the amount, the total amount would be the $22,060.33 that is owed to this particular person, which is the airport manager, Mr. Miller. Are there any questions? Any additional questions or?
I haven't seen the contract. And I would like to review it. And I don't know how many of my fellow counselors would feel the same way. But my feeling is that probably we should table this document until the next meeting so to give us enough time to review the contract, if that is the wish of the, of the members of the council.
I see we should, if there's no objection, we should put the contract as part of the package so that you have a copy of that. I support your table to motion for that reason. We should have that so that, you know, I'm surprised that it wasn't part of the packet, honestly. So we all should have that opportunity to look at it.
I'm sorry.
Second.
There's a motion of law to table. It has been properly seconded, discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
Oh, we cannot discuss motion table.
So let's just, I'm sorry. Let's take a vote on the motion to table. Or in favor say aye.
Table, to table.
To table.
Do you want to talk tomorrow on this?
I had a request from Mr. Anello to see if he had the letter, the signatures from the.
Again, the objective, the objective.
Right.
No, no, I was, I was going to ask him. Would you mind withdrawing the motion just so we could?
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Anello, do you have a?
You know, the, I think last week I had two out of the three signatures. I'm missing the overseer's signature. But I emailed him. I expect him to send me an emailed copy of his signature. Should have it tomorrow. But he's aware of the, of the transfer. He just hasn't been into town in the last couple of weeks.
Okay. That was my.
I don't have the copy of the contract, however.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. That was the only question I had.
So what are we going to do now? Are we going to table? We're going to?
My feeling is that without reviewing the contract, we should have the chance to review the contract.
Who would provide us with the contract? Is that coming from the airport or is that coming from?
It was supposed to be provided to the city clerk.
By?
So that it would be included in our package. So my suggestion is that it be included in the package for July.
I think the confusion came about that it was only sent to members of the subcommittee. There was a request by Councilor Keen to include it as part of the package. But it doesn't seem like he made it.
Okay.
But we only came to the subcommittee members.
I believe the request was going to be made to, my notes said for the personnel department to get a copy of the contract. But I believe the contract dates back to 2009. It was signed in 2009, is that correct? Yes, so it's a 2009 contract. So I don't know if that's, we're not asking for the council to approve the contract, just the funding of the, of the funds that were not remitted to the airport manager.
That's correct.
Okay, so the contract was signed in 2009?
That's correct.
When did, when is that contract coming for renewal?
So let me explain a little bit what the, so the situation here is that the contract allows for an increase. And that, that portion of it had not been paid out. The airport manager continued to receive the same salary during fiscal year 11, 12, and 13. And he's requesting that increase that had not been paid.
Oh, okay, okay. So let me, let me understand it. Let me see if I can understand it. The contract was signed in 2009. There were specific requirements of increases for 2010, 11, and 12? But they never happened?
Correct.
Okay.
Correction, 2011, 12, and 13.
2011, 12, and 13?
Yes.
Okay, so the increases never happened as it was supposed to based on the contract?
Correct.
And the committee sent it without a recommendation because you didn't have a copy of that contract to review?
We didn't have a copy of the contract or a signature of approval from either the overseer, the mayor, and the budget and finance director.
Now, did you receive by the time, have you been able to review the contract?
I did.
Okay, and are you satisfied that the speculation in the contract had not been met?
I think so, yes.
Okay, and is there sufficient money in there to cover for those increases?
Yes.
Yeah, will you?
Sorry, Counselor. That's the point of this transfer tonight, is to transfer from retained earnings, the airport's free cash, if you will, to the airport's operating account to pay the back wages due to the airport manager. And the amount is $22,060.33 for 11, 12, and 13.
Mr. Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, do you have a recommendation or a motion?
One of the things that I wanted to see personally was the signatures. And we're still missing one of the signatures. We don't have it. Mr. Anello unfortunately wasn't able to collect it.
You don't have it yet?
No. So the overseer will likely come tomorrow, right, Mr. Anello? Most likely. He usually comes on Wednesday.
I asked, I asked him to email me his signature back. I've got the mayor and my signatures here, but not the, not the overseer. So he has a copy, he's going to email it back.
So I would prefer to have the overseer's signatures as well, you know, with a stamp of approval there, saying that he agrees to it. One last thing, I'd like to point out that this is an enterprise account. It's not part of the general fund that we have. You know, it's a separate account from the airport. It's very similar to the water and sewer department. They have their own separate accounts and they do have fundings in their return earnings currently.
So the question again, what would you like to do with this document?
I personally will say table it because we're still missing a signature from the overseer.
Would you like to take, make the motion?
Motion to table? Second.
There's a motion of law to table the document. And it has been properly seconded, pending signatures, confirmation of signatures. And hopefully, on the first meeting of June, we will be able to approve that. Okay, any further discussion? If there is none, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, Document 15315 through 16115 are going to be sent to the Budget and Finance Committee. This requires, this requires a transfer of funds from the cash reserve to the different departments. I'm going to read the amounts so that you know what they are. Document 15315 is a transfer of $3 million to the DPW department to cover the cost of the snow and ice removal for this winter. Document 15415 is a transfer of $50,000 to the veterans' benefits. Document 15515 is a transfer of $115,000 to the legal. Document 155-15 is a transfer of $115,000 to the legal, uh, uh, department to cover a legal cost. Uh, Document 160-15 is a transfer of $886,243 to the capital reserve fund. And Document 161-15 is a transf, uh, is a transfer of those funds to the school capital project fund. Uh, so all these documents are going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, let's go into committee reports, and I would like to ask the chairman of our ordinance committee.
Vice.
To take those documents.
Vice.
I'm sorry?
Vice Chair.
The what?
Vice Chair, it's going to give the report.
Oh, the vice chair? Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilor President. Um, Document 105-15, old gold dealer license. It was a renewed one and came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make as a formal motion.
Motion had been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Okay. Document 108-15 is the handicap parking for Marshall Way, and it's been coming with favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I made a formal motion.
There's a motion of law to order a public hearing on Document 108-15. It has been properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
Document 115-15, patent of murder children, request to use the common on September 26 from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and that came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve, uh, Document 115-15. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? If there is none? You want, you would like to say something? Go ahead.
Okay, um, Lee, Pecan West 44 Exeter Street, last year, we had this event, and, uh, thank you to, uh, the members that were here, uh, for the ordinance committee that, uh, voted for it, and I hope you will let me have it again. We had a great time last year. It was very hot out that day. And, um, thank you.
Thank you for what you're doing, Lee.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselors, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Continue with Document 118-15.
118-15, Bread and Roses Festival Strike of 19 to a Request to Use the Common on Labor Day on September 7th, uh, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make as a formal motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve Document 118-15. Uh, is there any discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
Document 123-15, Transit Vendor License. Um, that from 22, 422 Main Street Hable, that put out an agenda by Manuel Garcia. Came, all the paper was in order, and that came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make as a formal motion.
Second.
A motion has been made and properly seconded for Document 123-15. Uh, discussion?
Just real quick, I'm just looking at this, and sometimes look at it a little more closely. On the transit vendor license review, uh, it says here, Office of the City Clerk staff signature. And there's also one of the old gold licenses. Does that happen after our vote, or should it happen before the vote?
Are we talking about 123?
123-15.
Yeah, I'm talking about that, yeah, 123.
I'm sorry, I missed your question.
Yeah, so you'll see here, it says City of Lawrence, Office of the City Clerk, and it has the gentleman's name on here. None of these things is, none of these things are, are checkmarked, and there's no signature. Does that happen after the council passes it, or should it happen before?
I go through that, uh, before it goes to the council. And again, after it comes out of the council, make sure the documents are in place. I did it today and completed the form with the applicant, and he's complied with every single term.
So you have this, and you have this, your signature on this as well?
Excuse me. I just did this today, that's why you don't have the checkbook.
Right. And just, and there was one before as well, and we went through it pretty quickly, the old gold license. There was no signature on that one. I just, is that, do you think it happened afterwards or beforehand?
Generally afterwards, before I actually issue the license.
Yeah.
Because if I see something is missing, I'll send it back to the council or just have the applicant complete it rather than send it back to council and delay the matter.
Okay, I think that sounds fair. Yeah, all right. I just wanted to clarify, so oftentimes this happens afterwards, not prior to?
I, I try to do it both times, to be honest with you. Like, i, if I can get it both, that's better. That way they're not before the council, uh, with insufficient documents.
Thank, thank you. Uh, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue, Madam Chair, Vice Chair.
And the last but not least, Document 126-15, Block Party UP Academy, request permission to close Leavenworth Street and Sperry Street and Lawrence Street on June 6th, um, 2015 from, okay, we changed the hour. They request 2 through 8, and we changed, we gave it another extra hour for setup and cleanup, and it's going to be 2 through 9:00 p.m. And I make as a formal motion.
Second. Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
That is, is that for?
That's it, you're finished. Uh, Document 129-15, Chairman of the, uh, Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document 129, uh, 15 is a prior year bill from fiscal year 14, uh, from TransCanada, uh, for the party department on the amount of $1,112 and 21 cents. And it was placed on the agenda by Mr., uh, by Lieutenant Paul, uh, Macaron. And I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion of law, it has to be properly seconded. Uh, question?
Yes, Mr. President.
You know that we passed an ordinance that we will not pay any bills out of the current budget for past bills? Was there any particular reason why the Budget and Finance Committee chose to go ahead and do this?
Sure.
Is there any specific reasons that why this, this bill was not, uh, submitted on time?
Definitely. So the reason this bill was not paid in, in fiscal year 14 i, is because of a problem in the munis system. Uh, the, the munis system that we have, which is basically our, um, finance, uh, software, rejected the payment during the upgrade. Uh, there was an upgrade that happened for munis, and the department was not able to actually get the information on time to be able to make that payment, uh, for that particular bill.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If there is none, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Document 135-15 is a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, SMRP, uh, grant from the Department of Environmental Protection, uh, on the amount of $6,400. Uh, and it came from the subcommittee with a favorable recommendation, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and se, and properly seconded to approve Document 135-15. Are there any questions? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Abstain.
Abstain. Uh, roll call. 135-15.
Let's see, Councilor Alvarez Rodriguez, Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez noted. Councilor Bernal? Uh, Councilor Bernal?
She just stepped out.
Yes.
She's here. Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Kino noted, uh, Councilor Elmonte. Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Tumi.
Yep.
Council LaPlante.
Abstain.
Epstein noted. Council Vasquez.
Yes.
And Council President.
Yes. Uh, if I, if I may, these, these have a time-sensitive element to them, and we would ask that if you could possibly waive the 30-day waiting period?
Motion to waive the 30 days?
Back him, please. Okay, there's a motion of law to waive the 30 days, and it has been properly seconded. All in favor say aye.
Why, why are we doing this?
We have to use it by mid-June.
Okay.
Uh, let's take a vote on the motion to waive the 30 days. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. Uh, continue with Document 136-15.
Uh, 136-15 is a Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, uh, Small Scales Initiative, and on the amount of $2,000. Uh, and it came from, uh, from the subcommittee with a favorable recommendation, and I would like to make a motion to approve and waive the 30 days.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve Document 136-15. It has been properly seconded, and also to waive the 30 days. Are there any questions? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Abstain.
I'm sorry? Or abstain? Roll call again.
Council Vasquez.
Yes.
Council LaPlante.
Abstain.
Noted. Council Tumi.
Yes.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Monte. Council Kino noted. Council Bernal.
Yes.
Council Vice President noted. Council President.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the committee reports. Counselors, are there any table matters that you would like to take and discuss?
Council President, I'd like to take Document 362-10 and 363-10.
362?
10 under Old Business.
Okay, 362-10 and 363-10. Okay. Uh, there's a motion of law to take Document 362-10 and 363-10 out of the Old Business?
They're on Old Business, they don't need a motion to take off, they're on the agenda.
Oh, okay. Uh, Mr. LaPlante.
Yeah, so, this is back on, I think one of the people during the, the pub participation brought, may have caught their eye. Uh, 362-10 and 363-10 dealt with the Carnival Rides and the Common that I introduced back in 2010. One of them dealt with trying to figure out exactly, essentially trying to figure exactly what do we need to do with respect to Carnival Rides and the Common. Because I knew back then that this may resurface, and in fact, it recently did. And, um, I guess it's important for folks to know that, that I'm not a Johnny come lately on this issue, that I've been here on this earlier on. And, um, there was an, a, a, an attempt to try to withdraw that, but as the minutes will show in your packet, um, it was supposed to be recommitted back to the ordinance committee so that we could go ahead and, and further discuss it. I think that it's not too late. I think we need to get working on that. Uh, we have a lot of festivals that are going to continue, Carnival Rides that'll continue, and I do think that this is very germane and very timely. So I would, um, it's up to you, Council President. We can have a, a robust debate here at the full council level, or we can certainly send it back down to the ordinance committee and continue the discussion.
Personally, personally, Mr. LaPlante, I would rather, I would like to send it back to the ordinance committee. Uh, this document is very old, and I think it would be nice for the ordinance committee to review it, look at the language that was discussed at the time. So, uh, if there's no, if, if there's no objection on your part, I would like to send, send these two documents down to the ordinance committee.
Sure.
No objection. Okay. Uh, we don't need a motion to, for that. Okay, so it's called, those documents are going back to the, uh, to the ordinance committee. Are there any other documents in the table matters, Old Business, et cetera, et cetera? Huh?
To Old Business Matters?
Yes.
Document, uh, Council President and Counselors, I'd draw your attention to Documents 158 and 159. Under Old Business, you may remember them as home rule petitions that were approved by the city council, uh, in, originally, uh, some time ago, more than two years ago. I received a call, it's in your packages, and I received an email from House Counsel by a Representative Devers, that the items, both items have languished in committee beyond their two-year limit, and they have died in committee. Um, the suggestion was to House Counsel to communicate to the Council President, which I have.
Mm-hmm.
That if the matters are to be resuscitated and revived, uh, they need to basically start from scratch. They are assigned new document numbers, uh, reflecting 2015, referencing in titles you can see, dating back to 2011 originally, for consideration of the council. Council President.
Uh, I know that these two documents, uh, one of them was, uh, submitted by, by Mr. LaPlante. And my feeling is that we should, uh, if we have to start all over, let's do it. Let's start all over, uh, and let's get it going. Let's get the process going again. Uh, so what I would like to do is send this, we would like to assign a new document now so that I can send it.
It's already assigned.
Okay, what are those document numbers?
158 and 159, as noted on the agenda. Just for ease of, in this process, I draw to your attention again, there is a draft, a statute provided by House Counsel in your information, and that process is suggested by House Counsel that this is the format or the form that it was left off at to be approved.
So, basically, all we have to do is review it and resubmit it again, and hopefully, we can send a letter to our representatives to carry it through and push forward these things. Obviously, in order for this to come out of committee, it needs a lot of support from the other representatives, and I hope that our representatives will get that support that is needed to move this forward. So, the ordinance committee this Thursday hopefully will look at it. We're going to have a lot of work. Okay, if there's no other...
Mr. President?
Yes.
We have a withdrawal document, 9415, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, yes, yes. Document 9415, I would like to entertain a motion to withdraw this document.
So, move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to withdraw document 9415. Any discussions?
I'm going to be, this is a constituent request of mine. I understand the council needs to do what the council needs to do. I'm going to be ending up on his behalf, objecting to it, but I understand the reasons why that has to happen, so.
Okay.
With no malice, I think you do this.
Okay. Let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Vice President noted. Counselor Bernal.
To withdraw.
To withdraw. Yes, it's to withdraw. Counselor Quino noted. Counselor Almonte.
Yes.
Counselor Reyes.
Yes.
Counselor Tumi.
Yes.
Counselor Plant.
No.
Counselor Vasquez.
Yes.
And Counsel President.
Yes. Okay, any further documents? If there's none, what I would like to do is go over the list of new business that I'm referring to the different committees. Document 13815, the Ebenezer Christian Church requesting permission to use the North Common Park. It's being referred to the ordinance committee. Document 13915, also the Ebenezer Christian Church requesting to use the park on June 3rd. That's going to maybe a problem, but I'm going to refer that to the ordinance committee. Document 14015, block party petition, is going to the ordinance committee. Document 14115, handicap parking 208 Willow Street, to the ordinance committee. Document 14215, pension vendor license, to the ordinance committee. Document 14315, pension vendor license, ice cream truck, to the ordinance committee. Document 14415, pension vendor license, also ice cream truck, to the ordinance committee. Document 14515, second-hand dealer license, 616 S Street, to the ordinance committee. Document 14615, second-hand dealer license, 165 S Street, to the ordinance committee. Document 14715, pension vendor license, 43 Whitman Street, to the ordinance committee. Document 14815, block party, Deservation Army, request to use the Campanon, the North Common Park on September 12th. That is also going to the ordinance committee. Document 14915, pension vendor license, ice cream truck, to the ordinance committee. Document 150615, annual authorization or reverving funds of the Verbius Cemetery. That is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. And finally, document 15715, safe and successful youth initiative grant is going to the ordinance committee.
Motion for adjournment.
That concludes the list of new business. I'm sorry?
Last one.
The last one is a grant, yes.
That's going to the Budget and Finance.
It's Budget and Finance Committee. Yes.
Counselor President, are we going to discuss this rule tonight?
I'm sorry?
Are we going to discuss the rule tonight?
The rules? I believe that we, didn't we agree to order a public hearing on that?
Yeah.
We don't need to.
Oh, okay, to discuss it. Okay.
Now, right?
Then let's discuss it. I know there were some comments from the public about holding, discussing this in public.
The rule change?
The rule change.
God, I was hoping you wouldn't bring it up.
[laughing]
It's the only one I didn't get onto the agenda. I had sent out a communication to the counselors suggesting, to my full power, and suggesting that it be continued to the next agenda when it would be properly placed.
Okay.
For final approval and vote of approval.
We do not require a public hearing on this because it's council's rules. So, but obviously, we're going to discuss it, and by the next meeting, people in the audience can talk about it. If anybody has a question, they can contact any of us as to the reason why we are making this rule change. Okay? Counselors, if there is no other matters, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, before we adjourn...
I'm sorry.
Okay, I just want to remind everybody that we have our budget hearing starting May 26, which is next Tuesday, and it will be May 26, 27, 28, and the following week, June 1st and June 3rd. And I hope to see, you know, members of the community, if they have any questions or concerns, please feel free to come. And also, June 4th, we have a public neighborhood forum, which will be held at Carleen's, and another forum, which will be held at the Senior Center on Monday, if you give me one second, let me confirm. Monday, June 8th.
Do you have a hard copy of the calendar?
Oh, I could print it out.
Can you please provide us one in our mailbox or email it to us?
Oh, definitely. I would gladly do so.
Okay, thank you.
I'll print it out.
Committees?
Six thirty.
Which one?
Committees meetings this week.
Let me confirm the date, Mr. President.
Six thirty meetings.
No, that's a neighborhood forum, not one of the hearings. Give me one second.
I think you sent out a citywide schedule.
Yes. So, it is important to note that we have an updated schedule. Originally, there was a schedule that came out. We had to make some changes to it due to, you know, the chatter, because it's very specific as to when we could do certain things. So, the updated version clearly states updated on the, you know, subject line. I'm sorry, it's on June 9.
Counsel, I did post a copy on the city council website.
Yes.
As well. It's there under city council agendas, so it is posted there.
With the updated version, thank you.
I intend to put it on Channel 22 as well.
Awesome, thank you. I apologize. It's on June 9th at the Lawrence Senior Center, six thirty, and six thirty, June 4th at Carleen's, also six thirty. And I'd like to thank Brenda Rossi for helping me organize that.
Chairman of the ordinance committee, we are meeting this Thursday. Am I correct?
Yes, we are.
Budget and Finance?
Budget and Finance tomorrow, as well as Public Safety before Budget and Finance.
Okay. Are there any other committees? Housing, personnel, no...
Not yet. To be determined.
Okay, excellent.